Is there some language in here that we could add that sets the less approved conditional use permit process?
Well, a conditional use permit, if you go beyond that thirty-three percent, you'd wind up requiring holding pods and things like that.
Which we currently do require that because in our ordinance eleven twenty, anything that requires a conditional use permit in that district, whatever district it is, requires the stormwater analysis. So, stormwater analysis has to be done if you want to do something in residential, business, industrial that requires a conditional use permit, it triggers you to do a stormwater analysis.
The Senator, whoever makes the motion at this time needs to be really clear what they're making the motion about.
I think we could do something on the impervious service, but there's not really anything hanging us up. There already shouldn't be a conflict with the churches and schools and all of that because they're already conditional use and they're already required to perform their stormwater runoff plan. So, that really doesn't affect them in any way. This only affects residential property owners that aren't going to have to have a conditional use. It simplifies the language. I mean, it doesn't penalize you for what your neighbors have today and then will change essentially the mark.
But did we want to stick with the fourteen hundred square foot for maximum size in a building? If I thought those ideas come, you can put an RV in your garage, your backyard, well.
That would still be a condition to use.
Not over fourteen hundred, maximum.
You don't think about fourteen hundred square foot accessory building?
So, the maximum garage size you can build is fourteen hundred square feet?
That's the way it is to me, you can have fourteen hundred square feet.
Right, but that's match you can have total.
Yes.
Here, you can have four fourteen hundred square foot buildings, you get a lot bigger than that.
You get a lot bigger than that, yes.
Which to me, why couldn't they have a twenty-eight hundred square foot building and all these little, well, fourteen hundred feet is a small garage, it's a pretty good size. I could use a lot bigger than that, but if I built that, I'd need a bigger one.
Thirty-five forty is twelve thousand.
Change that bay, what do you think about if you got a fifty-foot water hole?
This is similar to what you're talking about.
Overhead space, overhead space.
The thing is, if you got a five acre lot, you know, four acre lot, why, there you go. You know, so that's all deal.
You can't do it on an eighty-foot city lot.
No, you can't do it on a five acre lot either, it's a maximum. You could have up to five thousand square feet, but you can only have one, the biggest, any one building could be a fourteen hundred square feet.
That to me doesn't make sense on the five acre lot.
Forgot about the fourteen hundred square foot cap.
I think that needs to be.
But we don't have five acre lots that we control for residents.
We do often, we do help area.
I don't think that's quite five acres, but there's.
That was grandfather.
Right.
What we annex out of every, it's going to be lots. Of course, of course.
So, I agree that it should be penalized, they have this tiny little garage.
Yeah, I agree that one big garage is better than five small ones.
Right.
Supposing it's much more. Drive way, a grid driveway, and then build a big garage.
Size limit on the garage.
Take the porch off the house and put up a.
Size limit on the garage could be separating the from the impervious coverage.
Like you could make a little bit bigger garage for so much more percentage.
We could go back and rework some of that.
Instead of being like a thirty-three percent goal, because then you could put up an astrolabe. I mean, on a five acre lot, you'd have to cut it back a little bit.
It does, as it, it's ten percent of the lot. So, thirty-three is the max and then actually the percentage gradually decreases the larger the lot. You'll still get an increase in how much accessory building or impervious service that you can have.
But you won't be putting up a forty-eight by eighty building structure.
No, because if you got a five acre lot, you probably got more than fifteen hundred square, sixty hundred square foot house, too.
That's probably right.
I don't know, I just. Perspective, this is called a thirty-six by forty-six, if I can see the calories.
Do we, do we have an issue with that sight line thing? Because that's really what section four is talking about.
I like the idea personally, twenty-five, twenty-five for your non-controlled intersections and ten for your controlled ones.
Well, that's what there says, right?
Yeah, I, I think that's.
And ten said there's no conditional use to build a corner?
Yeah, no conditional, it's a set because it's a safety issue.
Yeah, supported with that, you can calculate that, there's a hard calculation.
So, you could probably deal with that two issues.
Mr. Chairman, it seems that we have questions about D three and there's been D eight about box thieves. So, fourteen hundred square foot thing, there seems to be some discussion about that. But all the rest, all the rest of the language has to do with impervious coverage, which we don't seem to have a problem with. And if we don't have a problem with the sight lines, we could send this forward with the exception of the language changes in D three and D eight.
We could solve three and eight.
Oh, we could just.
Do we want box thieves or don't we? It's always required to have box thieves.
There's really a necessity to have box thieves.
Versus allowing box thieves.
It's an aesthetic thing, sure, it's an aesthetic thing. Certain that somewhere along the line, we'd pick an argument about the, something that adds structure into the building, huh? About an engineer.
Well, it's easier to put up your gutters, it keeps the bats out. There's a lot of things easier to sweep to beat, I was out.
Was there a reason for it?
Well, I think the box thieves. Not, it allows for venting, you know.
Yeah, you can put a vent in there.
Then you've got an area for a vent. Other than that, I think it's just an aesthetic thing.
And the venting thing is a big deal and that's important because otherwise you can get moisture buildup and start rotting up on your roof.
Does the code requirement, does the code require box thieves for a house?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, because.
Preventing.
Minimal twelve inch, on a gable and eighteen hundred.
It was mostly just, you know, to be honest, it was because we were in this section anyways and I wanted to bring it up in conversation. It wasn't that I was pushing it or anything, it was just.
I think box.
I hit complaints about it, you know. I didn't want to tell them they can't have box thieves or they have to have box thieves.
The hard, I know they get instances where they have pre-built units, right?
Yes, that's what.
Is it difficult to solve that problem? I mean, is it impossible to box those thieves? I, I don't have one, so I don't know.
If you buy a pre-cut one, it's difficult to fix that. You get some of them with the barn style roof that just comes right down to it. How do you get a box thief on it, there's no place for it to go? So, that's where you run into this issue.
So, then we have a lot of.
Just enough to water rooms around.
Quinces?
Yeah.
Quinces are grown for chickens.
Somebody wanted a green house without rounded.
So, anything over a hundred twenty square foot requires permit, correct? Ten by twelve, two hundred square foot. So, anything that requires permit has box thieves.
Ours is attractive, a lot stronger.
He's going to talk me on the box thief.
Well, we could certainly do that, I mean, we could, that's always a separate discussion by itself. But if anything that's under two hundred, these are required buildings. What regulations do we also have? At this point, though, to me, it doesn't allow for that exemption. The box thieves requirement, just as all accessory buildings.
Right, you can go get your hard plastic one at Sears or whatever, your little yard shed, your eight by ten, you know, you've got box thieves there.
Yeah.
So, if it requires a permit, it requires a box thief.
Yeah, we're okay with the smaller buildings, not reading apartments, we should make a clarification.
Because obviously those ain't heated and insulated and where the ventilation is required, but where the structure. Any thoughts?
Then if you put up a dome house, they have to come in for a variance.
Well, Jerry's thing, if it's over two hundred, you would.
You would. That's not accessory structure, it doesn't require box thieves for ventilation. Lot stronger than a booming home.
The octagon houses that has to be.
Big box, though.
I believe homes require box thieves, so this is just not an accessory.
This is just talking about accessory structure.
If the accessory structure requires box thief or a building permit or requires box thieves. If it requires no building permit, we don't need box thieves.
Just for the accessory though.
This is, yeah.
Is it requires a permit for the box thieves?
Which is over two hundred square feet.
That box thieves are required, correct? And if no building permit is required.
So, if you want to go to Marv's or wherever, get a ten by twelve, a vehicle in the yards, they have box thieves in the little yard sheds. They're not required unless they require a building permit, really have to have an inspection.
And ours will like this because more people are buying their building. Okay, what about the other one?
The fourteen hundred square feet? I, I think I'd like to see some sort of sliding scale on that.
Yes.
Fourteen hundred square feet on a regular city lot, maximum. And then that percentage scale you were talking about after that.
I'll just run it plus maybe ten.
Plus ten, yeah, ten percent. Then if somebody has, you know, two lots side by side, they can get a little bit bigger garage, but not twenty-eight hundred feet.
Plus ten percent for a lot that's twelve thousand square feet.
But you've got the, I know there's lots next door, I mean, it would be one acre lots.
But it's on a sliding scale and it actually doesn't go even across the board, it actually diminishes.
Well, I'm just saying that with a one acre, with a one acre lot, if someone puts up a five thousand square foot home, they may look at five thousand square foot accessory building and they'd still have all the impervious, all the impervious areas that they need.
If it's attached, they're probably going to attach it to the garage at that point.
Well, at that point, they're probably.
Then it doesn't matter.
But I'm just saying with, with a, with a large lot, it's, I mean, even aesthetically, it makes more sense.
We're allowing more square footage, but we're not going to allow any bigger buildings.
No, that's what it is.
Talking about the sliding scale going up.
Right, so it's not making no sense, it's going to defeat the purpose.
Uh, no, well, if we add the sliding adjustment.
Sliding scale makes a little more sense than why you're allowing more.
Yeah.
But if we ain't going to change the fourteen hundred square foot for max, we might as well leave the one fourteen hundred square foot building there.
What's that, bigger sliding scale?
Right.
Yeah, we need to add the sliding scale for building size into it.
So, plus ten percent for lots over twelve thousand square feet.
Start with twelve thousand square feet and fourteen hundred square foot accessory and slide from there?
Yep, just like we do with the lots.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Do we want to seal that before we send it to you guys?
So, now, how does, how does that work if somebody does it and they want to split off and plot it off?
To see it right here.
And they have a huge.
You can make that into a motion that that's what you want.
If they don't need the, if they're servicing, they will be able to split it.
So, you want to be allowed to something. Don't want to be non-conforming or grandfathered in or none of that?
It wouldn't be, because if somebody wanted to build an accessory structure garage on the next lot, we require them to combine. And if somebody wants to sell just that lot with the garage, they can't because it doesn't have a primary structure on it.
Can't they for some rental?
Nope. If, if that, if those two lots are combined, they can't split it off if it's just a garage. It can go to another house with a garage, but it can't, can't be split to, and sell, sold separately. We did that sliding scale, so you start at fourteen hundred square feet of the twelve thousand square foot lot, right? Ten percent of that.
Just like we do with the impervious.
So, we had a forty-three thousand five sixty square foot lot, which is an acre. And we're going to go ten percent of, for every square foot the lot is larger. Then you get, then you get up to a forty-five hundred and fifty-six square foot building that you can have a twenty-four acre lot.
I think ten percent of the fourteen hundred.
Forty, ten percent of the fourteen hundred.
Ten percent of fourteen hundred makes more sense, unless we're going to end up with a huge building.
I'll grow one there.
Yeah, archery barn.
There you go.
And then, okay, so ten percent of fourteen hundred is.
Yeah, but then what's their total, what's their total building size for the lot?
That isn't going to work out either.
With their house?
Listen.
For impervious on an acre, what's the, what's a third of the acre, right? Well, an acre, what's the most square footage you can have impervious on an acre? Because you're, no, a house, you can have driveways, you can have everything else, you got to take out of there too, so do that.
Yep. I think we have someone who wants to make a motion here.
Could we, could we do this? Just throw it up here for a second. We'll pass what is being recommended tonight with the exception of the language in D three and ask that staff return to us at their convenience with, with that sliding scale. So, we have some, something better than just imagination here.
Yeah, we could hold that. Ordinance up for this deal and then we have another ordinance change.
We do that all the time.
We can include this in the next one if we decide to go for it with the best discussion.
We'll wait and put it all together? I can wait, you want to wait?
I want somebody to make a motion and then we can either vote it in or vote it out for today.
Mr. Chairman, I move we table this issue and, and we get section D three squared away next meeting.
Or a meeting after that, whatever.
But your motion is that everything else be.
Yeah, it would just, let it sit for a digest.
Just D three.
No, I think he's motioning to table whole works.
Yeah, that's, because it sounds like they want to do the whole works. And if we can't do, if you don't want to do it piecemeal, we got to do the whole works.
But we could do part of it. I see, here's the deal. We're holding up a lot of people, maybe not a lot, maybe a few. But we're probably all in agreement on part of this already. The only thing we're having an issue with is the sliding scale. We can't have five thousand eight hundred square foot buildings.
Accessory buildings.
Accessory building, even on a five acre, that's a huge darn building.
Chicken barn.
Yeah, there you go, raise chickens and you know, maybe we can get that.
Can't add farm animals in town, what's wrong with you?
Past four thousand chickens.
Mr. Chairman, I renew my, my first motion. Now, we, we passed the changes in, uh, section, city code section eleven point oh three, B through D and P with the, with the language changes as presented this evening with the exception of the language changes in D three.
Motion has been made, you explained this motion, do we hear a second? Do we hear a second?
A second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, fair to the public. Do you have anything to say about this that might, because we brought up an additional issue there pertaining to box thieves? Do you have anything against that? But the motion was made there as, if you don't have, if you don't need a permit for a building, if it's two hundred square feet or less, you don't need box thieves. But if you need a permit to put up that building, it's required that the box thieves remain. Do you have an issue with that or some?
I have a question, the Meshkis were in here a couple of years ago asking, they bought Steve, I can't remember his name, or by the golf course. And that whole building did not have box thieves at the time. And they were told they would have to make them into box thieves, so they did that.
By this.
What?
They would still be required to by the change in here.
Okay, so it's just the smaller buildings that wouldn't have to.
Just the ones that you don't need a permit for, you can just go by like a Menard building, under two hundred feet.
Saw a ten by twenty, so be like your little building by Marv, saw your little eight by ten yard sheds, you can go to.
I think that's a good idea because.
Whatever, bye.
I, I agree with that, I think that's a good idea, so more people can afford to put up those kind of buildings.
So, you guys, when you make your decision, publics put their input in?
Isn't the question about impervious services that you didn't?
We discussed that before.
During the public hearing? I don't think so.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, that was, well, part of the big public hearing.
And we discussed it as part of the big public hearing, but.
Oh, I heard that you were discussing the fences for the public hearing. I did not hear any discussion that the public hearing involved that.
Eleven oh three was, was all of it, the impervious servicing fence.
Right, but, but you guys hadn't even clarified anything about that part before you had the public hearing.
I touched on it before I handed it over to them.
Right.
You did, yeah, because I wrote, that's when I wrote it down on my notes on the back. I think the fence height turned into a major discussion and it had to fall away from.
Yeah.
But we did, and we also discussed, you know, the site, so we went through all of that. Okay, motion's been made, publics give their input and their responses to it, now we vote on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Come back with, uh, with that whole three percent sliding scale thing and work on that a bit. Okay, we had the two public hearings, is there anything else you want to discuss here?
New business?
New business, that's, uh.
Training. Yeah, so I put a copy of that, it's out on fire, whatever, training session is coming over here. It's at the end of your staff's order. They're having it in three different locations, one of which is Little Falls on September twenty-second. It's an all-day, ten, nine to four thirty. I've been to this, it's been quite a, quite a while, but my experience with these training sessions is that they're generally pretty good. If you want to go to it, I guess, let us know. Fairly soon, and we can get you signed up, there is a program or a JPA, we'll pay for your registration fee. You don't, you don't have to say tonight, just let us know.
Yeah, that's the twenty-second of September.
Twenty-third of September.
You can see they got the points there of the topics that they come up with.
Well, hearing nothing else, let's adjourn this meeting.
I move we adjourn. Ball favors stand. Are you adjourned?
We're adjourned.
Thank you. Pay us overtime tonight.
Whenever, whenever there's a discussion about fences or chickens, the meetings go on forever. There's just so many variables. That's before I've seen it, it's coming.
Yes.
They just stay in each room.
They got to raise their own names.
Roosters, I see a prime one.
It's, we're not, the last time through, I did check, I voted all times, no chance. Because I didn't see enough problems there.
What was the reason for not that?
And maybe one of them.
Is it still sanitary?
She, I guess, the way she came. She had some people call her up that they didn't want it.
No.
There was more opposition to it.
Squeaky, we don't disagree.
I still think, I wouldn't find, I mean, I don't, it's not that big a deal, you still have the same chickens. You've not been. If you comply with all the regulations, like you have. It has to be, it has to be so far away from properties, so it's not right on a fence line where the neighbor can be, finds chickens discussing. I mean, there was a lot of things in there. The health and safety thing is, who's going to monitor it? Chicken police or. So, that was.
I will.
I don't know, if it comes to being, I guess, we'll have to hear it. Yeah.
See you later.
See you later, because the planning commission actually sent it through with a favor. That was a little girl.
Because it was first Hollywood Rock, that was the last.
And she's no longer so. Second year college, you know.
It's been that long?
Yeah, and it seems like it was just yesterday.
Is there, is there going to, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Is there going to be another public hearing then on fence heights?
Yeah, that wasn't even in on this.
Okay.
It's just a matter of.
That's why, I wasn't trying to be rude, I was trying to say, you know, we're getting off task here.
Six months if you.
It wasn't just you, it wasn't just you, it was us. We were discussing six foot high fences when that wasn't even part of this ordinance, you know? So, uh, that'd be like us all sitting talking about small homes, which might be brought up against some.
Well, as you can hear, there's at least several other people who wanted that.
You know, we discussed.
That was Mary Warner's mom, wasn't it?
We didn't have that many lots, forty foot lots that weren't in compliance. I think there were only eight of them in the whole town.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, it was a mid twenties.
Twenty-five.
It was a mid twenties, yeah.
Well, then that becomes, you know, we have a lot of land sitting there.
Say nothing about any of the properties that will become foreclosed on for tax abatement or whatever, that will be forthcoming and that are too small.
And there's going to be a lot of light tear downs coming through and the northeast end of town here is getting pretty old. Some of these buildings, it's just not feasible to try to restore them anymore because they're, they're gone, you know, they're just too old.
There's some of eighty footers that we looked at when we bought our house, and I don't know how they're still standing, you know.
Yeah.
I don't, you know...